Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Michael Owen. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapata. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostol. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the May 3, 2023, regular scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Cameron Sapata?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We ask you for a special blessing on all of the residents, everyone in Hillsborough County, mighty God. And we thank you, we ask you for that each and every one of us will have a great love, respect for each other. And we just thank you right now. We speak a special blessing over everyone in Hillsborough County, that there, for their spirits, souls, and bodies, that it is well with them in every area of their lives, everything that concerns them. And we pray for a special protection over everyone that is serving in our military, our law enforcement, our firefighters, and first responders. We pray for their protection. And we ask you to lead and guide us. We pray for wisdom and knowledge for every one of the county commissioners and everyone that works for the county. And we thank you and we ask you to bless this meeting in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Sapata. This morning, we have three very special proclamations to present, and Commissioner Cohen will present the first one.
Well, good morning, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to invite the following individuals to join me at the podium. The Honorable Elizabeth Rice, Circuit Court Judge. Gina Justice, our court administrator. The Honorable Ronald Ficarota, Chief Judge of the 13th Judicial Circuit. Julia Schilling, the Director of Problem Solving Courts. Jeremy Riley, Drug Court Specialist. Michael Reynolds, Drug Court Specialist. Heidi Nagel, Drug Court Specialist. And Amy Filbrick, Drug Court Specialist. Good morning. Good morning, and thank you for joining us today. Established 31 years ago, the 13th Judicial Circuit's Adult Drug Pre-Trial Intervention Court is instrumental in helping decrease drug-related crimes by giving first and second-time drug offenders the opportunity to complete a treatment program and avoid having a felony conviction. This court does an incredible job of providing individuals another chance in life, a chance to turn themselves around and become productive residents, something we all desire. The success of this program is due to the dedication and comprehensive work of all its participants, including judges, prosecutors, and defense attorneys. It is my pleasure to present this proclamation declaring May 2023 as Drug Court Month. I will present it to you, Judge Rice.
Thank you.
There you go. I'm gonna, I'm going to briefly read the, a few things from the proclamation, and then I'd like to invite you to say a few words. Whereas drug treatment courts combine judicial supervision, treatment, and random drug testing with graduated incentives and sanctions; and whereas drug treatment courts are a proven intervention for assisting people who live with substance abuse and mental health disorders outside of the justice system, positively transforming their lives as they receive the much-needed recovery and stability they deserve; and whereas drug treatment courts improve substance use disorder treatment outcomes, decrease addiction and related crimes, and save substantial taxpayer dollars by reducing the number of incarcerated defendants; and whereas drug treatment courts facilitate community-wide partnerships, bringing together public safety and health organizations; whereas drug treatment courts improve education, employment, housing, and financial stability, promote family reunification, reduce foster care placements, and increase the rate of addicted mothers delivering babies who are completely drug-free; and whereas the 13th Judicial Circuit's Adult Drug Recovery Court and Adult Drug Pre-Trial Intervention Court demonstrate that when one person rises out of substance use and crime, we all rise; and whereas May is nationally recognized as Drug Court Month, further illustrating the hard work and dedication of judges, case managers, prosecutors, defense attorneys, treatment professionals, and law enforcement personnel, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County does declare May 2023 as Drug Court Month in Hillsborough County, and urges all Hillsborough County residents to support the Adult Drug Recovery Court and Adult Drug Pre-Trial Intervention Court and its staff for their unwavering commitment to the sex, success of drug court participants, executed this third day of May 2023, and it is signed by all seven county commissioners. So Judge Rice, please say a few words.
Well, first and foremost, I want to thank all of the Board of County Commissioners, not only for, obviously, this proclamation, but importantly, for the support that you show for these courts in the community and financially. This board puts its mouth, money where their mouth is, and we are so appreciative of all of that support. And what I want to mention about our drug courts, it has been proven as the most successful intervention in the history of our country in trying to lead folks struggling with substance use disorders and mental health disorders into lives of recovery and stability. And as the proclamation notes, not only do our drug courts save lives, it also saves the state and our local governments that support us substantial tax dollars. We are saving lives, we are helping people to get into recovery, and become those productive citizens they wish and have always had dreams of becoming. Now, these courts don't run on their own, and there are some folks here who assist us, so I want to give a special shout-out and recognition to my drug court team, so thank you very much. Ms. Schilling, our Problem Solving Court Director. And I also want to do a shout-out for the state attorney, Susie Lopez, for the public defender attorney, Julie Holt, and for our providers and stakeholders, the Department of Corrections. Without their cooperation and collaboration, we could not make this court a success. Thank you very much.
Judge Ficarota, would you like to say a few words?
Just very, very brief, very, very briefly. Mr. Chair, Board, thank you all very much for everything you do in supporting our drug court, everything you all do to support our entire court system and our branch. We sincerely appreciate everything you all do. Thank you.
And, and Judge, we, we appreciate you, and we know you're stepping down soon from your role, and we'll, we'll have more about that, I think, at a later county commission meeting. We'd like to take a picture, though, before we...
Commissioner Cohen, can I say just a couple things?
Of course.
Sure, sure. First, I want to thank you all for being here. You know, addiction hits every family. Every person in this room, including me, has had a family member, somebody where addiction has affected them, whether it's our Veterans Treatment Court, our vocational opportunities that we provide for second chances. Second chances really matter. Judge Rice, it feels weird me sitting higher than you right now. I've been before Judge Rice plenty of times. Thank you for your patience with me, but you're just a blessing to Hillsborough County Chief Judge. Thank you all for what you do.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen, and Commissioner Myers will present our next proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. I'm going to ask the First Vice President, Ms. Tina Fernandez, Dr. Paulette Walker, going to ask the undergrad president to come forward, and a couple of the leadership of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Going to ask the members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated to please stand. Let's show some love to the sisterhood. May be seated. Thank you so much. It is an honor and a privilege to have you all here today. You all come every year to celebrate Delta Day, and I am truly honored to present this proclamation to Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. And the proclamation reads: Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is a private, not-for-profit organization of college-educated women, whose purpose is to aid and support through established programs in local communities throughout the world, and extensive array of public service initiatives, delivered through its five-point programmatic thrusts. Since its founding in 1913, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated has clearly distinguished itself as an organization that boldly confronts the challenges of African-Americans, and hence, all-American membership consists of more than 300,000 women and 1,000 collegiate and alumni chapters located in the United States, the Bahamas, Bermuda, Canada, Germany, Jamaica, Japan, Tokyo, and Okawaka?
Okinawa.
Okinawa. Thank you all. Okay. Liberian anniversary of our statute as a non-governmental organization, members of the United Nations, and the 60th anniversary of the National Social Action Commission. And whereas the two alumni chapters, Tampa Alumni Chartered in 1947, and Tampa Metropolitan Alumni Chartered in 2003, along with the two collegiate chapters, Kappa Iola at the University of South Florida, chartered in 1973, and Ta Iola at the University of Tampa, chartered in 2001, provide community service and support to the residents of Hillsborough County. They use their efforts to serve as a vehicle for advocacy that affects social change, public policy, supporting quality education, and granting scholarships to high schools, seniors, producing new projects to stimulate current and future economic growth, and improving holistic well-being of minority population locally, nationally, and globally. And whereas the Tampa Alumni Chapter, celebrating 76 years, strive to be the leader in local and global communities by creating positive transgenerational impacts through excellence in innovative programming, dedicated service, and social action. Whereas notable members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated are Dr. Paulette C. Walker, 25th National President. This is Dr. Walker. Thank you so much. Former State Senator Athena Joyner. The Senate Former Democrat Leader, the Honorable Doritah Edgecombe with the Hillsborough County Public Schools. The Honorable Frances Driscoll, Florida House of Representative Minority Leader, and Florida House of Representative District 67. The Honorable Charlene Edwards Honeywell, United State District Judge, Middle District of Florida. And Gwendolyn Henderson, Tampa City Council, District Five. And whereas, with the 34th Annual Delta Day at the nation's Capitol theme, forward with fortitude, elevating our power for a new era of impact, the social action committees of the Tampa chapters are convening the 17th Annual Delta Day at the county commission as a component of the sorority's national make-week celebration. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare May 3, 2023, as the 17th Annual Delta Day in Hillsborough County, and commend the Tampa chapters of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated on their years of continued exemplary service to Hillsborough County and its citizens, executed this third day of May, and signed by all seven county commissioners. And I'm going to ask my aide, Divida Franklin, to please present the proclamations. Thank you. And I'm going to ask Ms. Fernandez to say a few words, followed by a few words on the National President. Anytime you have the National President in the House, she has to say a few words as well.
In fact, I will yield to my 25th National President to speak first.
What can I say? I'm home, I'm glad to be home. Yes, I do live in Valrico, Florida, which is unfortunately not a part of, well, what can I say? That's where I live, that's home for me. So I'm just glad to be home. And to, I call her Masor. That's a private joke, okay? To Masor, Gwen Myers. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And to all the commissioners, we say thank you. But most important, most importantly, to the community members, we're here to serve you. Just remember that. We are here to serve you. And to the leadership that's here, let me say, you've done well, you've done well. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Walker. On behalf of the almost 500 members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, housed in Hillsborough County, serving you through social action and community service, we thank the commissioners for this acknowledgement. We continue to empower the citizens of Hillsborough County to take action, to elevate, and we do it through voices, as you've heard through our five-point programmatic thrusts. I am honored to represent the Tampa Alumni Chapter on behalf of our president, Dr. Tiana Richardson, and I stand in agreement with my sisters here that we are here to serve you. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. I'm part, I'm glad to be a part of the Divine Nine because we know service is what we do, and we take care of our community very well. Again, so thank you for coming this morning. Let's take a picture. Oh, I'm going to invite the other Delta Sisters to please come and be a part of this. Oh, we have to move quickly because they do have board meetings shortly.
It's my privilege to present the final proclamation this morning, declaring May 2023 as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. We have some very special guests with us from the Asian American Pacific Islander Advisory Group. I'd like to invite them to come forward, please. Agent Pacific American Heritage Month was first established by the United States Congress in 1978, honoring the contributions Asian Pacific Americans have made in their sciences, arts, industry, government, and commerce. It originally encompassed the first 10 days of May, but in 1992, Congress extended the observance to include the entire month of May. Hillsborough County is enriched by its large population of Asian Pacific Americans, whose origins include Cambodia, China, India, Indonesia, Japan, North and South Korea, Philippines, Singapore, Thailand, and Vietnam. Their impacts are widespread and significant, and I'm honored to celebrate these people and their diverse cultures with this proclamation. It reads: Whereas Asian, South Asian, and Pacific Islander American communities possess deep roots in the United States, the state of Florida, and Hillsborough County; and whereas Asian, South Asian, and Pacific Islander Americans contribute to the county's vibrant diversity, greatly expanding the region's prosperity, and enriching residents' lives every day by sharing ideas, customs, and wisdoms. And whereas Asian Pacific American Heritage Month is observed during May to recognize the value influences Asian, South Asian, and Pacific Islander Americans have made in all areas of life, including government, business, arts and sciences, medicine, education, and law enforcement. And whereas Hillsborough County wishes to bring attention to and condemn Chinese Communist Party infiltration and influence directed at the Asian, South Asian, and Pacific Islander American communities, while also making space to create joy, healing, education, and celebrations for the richness of their cultures. And whereas Asian Pacific American Heritage Month's theme is "Stop CCP Socialism Attempt", awareness, solidarity, community, and celebration, and Hillsborough County is committed to providing comprehensive support that is equitable and welcoming to all people. And whereas Hillsborough County is proud to celebrate Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and commemorate the essential contributions, advocacy, and sacrifices made by all Asian, South Asian, and Pacific Islander Americans. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare May 23 as Asian Pacific Islander, or Asian Pacific American Heritage Month in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents to recognize the achievements by Asian, South Asian, and Pacific Islander Americans, further demonstrating the importance of cultural diversity and unity, executed this third day of May 2023. I'm very proud to present this to my good friend Hung Mai and Joey Omeley.
He said Jim.
And if you guys please say a few words.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, county administrator, and county attorney. My name is Hung Mai. On behalf of Asian community here in this chamber today, we thank you very much for the Board of County Commissioners recognized the month of May is Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Representing today, we got the Chinese community, represented by Sunny Duan and Min He with the Sun Coast Chinese American. Hmong community, represented by Mai Yang, Secretary of the Florida Hmong community. Japanese community, represented by Wen Mori. Wen is the outstanding, the accounting who worked for the pork of Tampa Bay. Korean community, represented by David Shin, Korean member of the, he the chair of Korean Association of West Tampa, and Mr. Lee T. Kim, he the picture of Mirapay and Apollo Beach area. Laos community, represented by Somadet Intan Lancy, president of Laos community of Tampa Bay. Philippine community, which is a big community, right here, represented a good friend Joey Omeley, you know, he the picture of Philippine Cultural Center. And Indian community, representing by Debs Qualley, he the president of Indo-US Chamber of Commerz. And the Vietnamese community, representing by Dr. Than Mi, see a Vietnamese community of Tampa Bay. Ms. Ng A Lee, founder of Vietnamese How. Mr. Ken Tran, he the US Army veteran and the pork, you know, security manager. And Ms. An Nguyen, see a member of a Hillborough County Diversity Advisory Council. And the biggest thing in national Asian American professional organization, representing by Mary Ben Anderson. The Taiwanese community representative unable to attend it today. Mr. Chairman and member of the Board, we are so proud and thankful for your commitment to keep Hillborough County a diversity place, and recognize all different culture to weave us into the fabric of the plate we call home as a second homeland. The evident way that 11-year, 11-year ago, this board, some of them, you know, still here, created the Hillborough County Diversity Council, and I'm so blessed that you trusted me to run that council for four years, in which I'm a chairman for two years. Mr. Chairman and member of the Board, with your permission, at this time, I want to invite the community representative, it's not going to take too long, I try to keep with three minutes, you know, of your rule. If the leader of the community wished to address, you know, their comment to the Board, thank you, thank you, thank you for your commitment, thank you for your support, you know, the Asian Pacific American community. Now, I would like to invite whoever, you know, want to be addressed to the Board.
Yes, who can I?
Okay, the three-minute limit.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioner Chair Ken Hagan, and all the Board of Commissioners. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Dr. Tammy Nguyen, the VP of the Vietnamese Community of Tampa Bay and Florida. I am honored and proud to be here today with you all to be presented a proclamation for Asian American Pacific Heritage Month by Hillsborough County Commissioner Chair, Mr. Ken Hagan. Like millions of others who left their homeland to migrate to America, the Vietnamese American community migrated to the United States, escaping communism in 1975 after the fateful day of dawn of Saigon, April 30. We are so fortunate to have America, our second homeland, welcome us with open arms and helped us realize a new life of freedom and democracy, as well as share, a share of the American dream with, for all, with hard work and dedication. As we celebrate the American, Asian American Heritage Month today, we honor all those who have dedicated their lives to making our American dream possible. We are grateful to those who have served and to those who have sacrificed their lives to protect us and give us the freedom and democracy, as well as the peaceful daily lives we enjoy to, in this great nation of America. God bless the United States of America, and thank you all. Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for this Asian American Pacific Islander proclamation for May Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. We are also members of the mayor's AAPI Advisory Council, and we would like to invite Hillsborough County and the county commissioners to please join us on May 13, from 10 to 6 p.m. at Curtis Xixon Park for the very first MAAPI Asian Pacific Islander Cultural Festival. We're going to have... Watch us on all the stations that week. We're going to have cooking demonstrations, dancers, and it's just a taste, a glimpse of what we're going to have. This is the signature...
This is the signature festival event for the Asian American community in Tampa Bay. And all of these representatives here before you from the various Asian and Pacific Islander countries are going to be there. So we'll see you there.
All right, let's take a picture.
Where's each teeth?
Oh, mine.
Thank you.
How are you?
These ladies need to be in the front. We need to see everybody. I'm gonna be a tiger mom now. Ladies in the front. Over here so we can see everybody. Thank you for your patience. That get the perfect shot. Can I see you in here somewhere?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
There's gonna be the best, the best dancing.
Thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
Well, I feel inclined to say that I've been on this board a long time, and we've been given a lot of coffee mugs, but this is the first time that we've received roses, at least to my knowledge. So, thank you Hung, and thank you to everyone that came down this morning. Bonnie, want to review the changes to the agenda?
I would agree, already my favorite meeting. Although the strawberry shortcake is maybe the favorite. Alrighty, we have one item that has been added to the addendum. This is the deferral of item A14. This is to adopt a resolution amending the fee schedule for building and construction services that aligns with the current deliveries cost and provides for review of the fee schedule every three years. That has been deferred to May 17. We have one item for time certain, item D1 at 10:00 a.m. This is to hold a second public hearing to consider the adoption of an ordinance declaring zoning in progress and providing for temporary moratorium on the establishment of vaping retail shops. 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Motion, approve the changes.
Second.
Motion Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers, please record your vote.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah, my pad isn't working, so I vote yes.
With Commissioner Cohen voting yes, motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, the board, going to public comment portion of the agenda. The board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to the board members. However, it is requested at the same time when you address the board that comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or staff member, but rather the issues. The board has set aside 45 minutes for public comment this morning. The chair will call on speakers by name in the order in which their request to speak have been received. When addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. Each person will be given up to three minutes. The first three speakers this morning, David Coleman, followed by Rachel Perez, and then Kimberly Cox. Mr. Coleman?
Mr. Coleman?
Morning, sir.
Morning, my name is Dave Coleman. I'll be brief. I was born on a warm spring day. Why is my county commission standing with Tico and Mosaic corporate polluters instead of the safety of citizens? As to the EPA response to my inquiry about unlined coal ash piles, yes, they are removing unlined ones and replacing with one large line pile, which doesn't solve the decades of growing, shifting, in-ground plumes, dumping poisons into our estuary that you are monitoring. We will be monitoring airborne particulate matter in Progress Village as we have purchased the equipment to do so on our own. I have found new reports on the traffic deaths, 219 in Hillsborough with 30,000 accidents and 20,000 injuries. We are still the deadliest county in the country. Our TPO and MPO needs to remain Hillsborough-specific. On housing, hotel vouchers, or child abuse, we need a county family shelter. If SB 102 goes through, you need to stand with the 42,000 Tampa residents that received evictions over the past two years. I attended Land Use Planning Commission Zoom meeting and a Children's Board planning meeting. Both revealed real differences between the urban core and rural areas. Both, though, have concerns about housing, transportation, food, and jobs. You'll be making long-term decisions over the next months that are gonna affect thousands of people. Canceling federal funds that were enterprising, that enterprising Latinos had won in an area where one-third or below the poverty line is a cry and shame. Shame on you. Now libraries, rating systems are not a specific measure, a scientific measure of what's developmentally optimal for kids, but a subjective determination of what parents are likely to accept their kids reading based on current social norms. Whose norms? Yours? What book gets flagged for what age? What books of the Bible are flagged for violence and sex? When government reaches into books, art, history, faith, and even speech, we are not free. It has become a top-down fascist state. I reject right-wing Christian nationalism as I continue my love of Christ and what he stands for. This was America. You can pry my library card, my kid's library card, my prospective grandchildren's cards from our cold, dead hands. Thank you, I'll see you next time.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Rachel Perez, followed by Kimberly Cox. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Rachel, and I live on MacDill Air Force Base with my husband and two children. My husband would be here seconding all of my comments, however, he is currently deployed. My family are regular patrons of the county library system, especially from here in my career capacity as a professional book reviewer. All of these things are what inform my position today. I want it to be known that I see this as an absolute waste of my time. It seems to me that certain people who put forth this agenda item about the ALA do not have the necessary expertise to question library workers on their jobs, seeing as certain members of this board do not seem to understand basic social and economic theory, and are wanting to withdraw our libraries' ALA association based on fear, not on facts or actual resource, or actual research. I am confused why the same person who has asked for evidence that the ALA has any benefit to our library system has offered no evidence to substantiate any of their own claims, and says that changes must be done to our library system based solely on their own personal opinions and no adherence to facts or studies. This is concerning to me because serious accusations were made without backing any of them with actual evidence. I would like to remind the board that no one else here is the parent of my children. I am, and I would like my children to have access to good ALA-affiliated libraries that foster critical thinking. I am fully capable of parenting my children on my own. I do not need a nanny state implemented to help me parent my children. I am concerned that there's a witch hunt happening against books that is bleeding over from Manatee County into our county, and I'm frustrated. Books teach children to think critically for themselves and to form critical opinions on the world. All I'm seeing with these restrictions is a possible way of depriving them of their human right to knowledge and education. I want evidence-based decisions made for our libraries, and the burden of proof that the ALA is a problem is on the commissioner making the assertion. For this reason, I would ask this board to clarify the following points, specifically the commissioner who is responsible for this agenda item. Can you point to any reputable studies that show any negative health or social outcomes for children checking out books in the adult section, and if not, how was this conclusion come to? Can you explain what the definition of Marxism is and why the ALA having a president who believes in certain social economic theory is a problem? To me, this frankly seems rooted in Red Scare propaganda. Can you explain what the alternative plan is regarding the benefits lost by forfeiting the membership, and do you have an alternative plan to offer for the community? Specifically, the library workers who benefit from the ALA system. Can you provide examples of actual harm that have come to children through libraries associated with the ALA, such that would justify taking our library system out? And are we going to discuss or define what is actually meant by controversial books dealing with sexuality, or is the wording going to remain vague? In which case, the Bible will actually need to be made inaccessible to minors as it has accessible, as excessive as it gets, controversial and explicit content regarding sexuality. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Kimberly Cox, followed by Nicole Huff. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Kimberly Cox. I'm with Women's Voices of Southwest Florida. I am the proud parent of a child in the trans community, so I'm used to people saying that they are banning things in order to protect my child, when in reality, these tactics are often used to erase the representation of people my child could relate to, in person, in books, and in media. We are avid readers in our home, and while raising my children, we often spent time in the public library, not only for fun, but sometimes to often, and often to escape the Florida heat. So when I heard about the parameters that you all would be using to decide if a book should be removed or not, I thought of a book that I was read to as a child. Adults in my life read this book to me. I'm just, okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure I had your attention. So adults read this book to me and often asked me to read it as well. I'm finding myself wondering if this book would be removed. Now, don't worry, I have not subjected my children to this book. It had devastating effects on my life, and I would not want to do that to them. But a few passages that I'm concerned about are as follows. "She lusted after lovers with genitals as large as donkeys and emissions like those of a horse," Ezekiel 23:20. "Here, take my virgin daughter and this man's concubine. I will bring them out to you, and you can abuse them and do whatever you like, but don't do such shameful things to this man." "But they wouldn't listen to him, so the Levite took hold of his concubine and pushed her out the door. And the men of the town abused her all night, taking turns raping her until morning. Finally, at dawn, they let her go," Judges 1924-25. "Why have all, I'm sorry, why have you let all the women live?" he demanded. "So kill all the boys and all the women who have had intercourse with a man. Only the young girls who are virgins may live. You may keep them for yourselves." That's Numbers 31:15, 17-18. So to finish up, I just want to tell you that my grandpa, and who was my favorite person on the planet, and my, three of my great uncles on both sides of my family fought in the World War II. And I just really think that less than 100 years later, while you're trying this fascist book banning approach, that they would be ashamed of you, and that they didn't go to war and bury their friends for you to turn around and do this nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Huff, followed by James Shaw. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm Nicole Huff of Hillsborough County. I am a library card holder, and I am a longtime resident of Hillsborough County. And my daughter is a library card holder. And do you know how I know what she's reading? I go with her to the public library. We go together, and we look at books. We look at books in the juvenile section and the children's section. We also look at books that are in sort of the adult section because the Marvel comic books are in the adult section, and she likes Spider-Man, and she likes Star Wars. So we read those, but I look at them with her. And that's my right as a parent. I can go and check and see what she is reading. As a parent who has a child with a library card, I can log into her account and look at the list of what she has and hasn't checked out. And when she becomes old enough to go to the library by herself to do some homework, I can talk to her about what is and isn't appropriate for our family before she goes in there. And when she leaves, I can ask her what she looked at, and I can see what she checked out. That's what the library provides. And as a parent, I provide the support to decide what is and isn't appropriate for my family. And it is different for each and every family. My daughter gets scared with scary stories and thinks that monsters are real when she reads about them. So there are some books that are labeled as mystery in the children's section that I tell her are not yet appropriate for her, because I don't want her to be scared. But that book is absolutely appropriate for another girl in her class who likes to invent and tell scary stories and wants to be a writer someday and isn't scared by them. It is not the job of the library to take out any book that might scare my daughter. It is my job to help her select appropriate books. As an adult reader, I want adult books, especially nonfiction ones, in the library because that's what I read, and that's how I become a better human. Books help us learn, and they also help us to practice empathy because we put ourselves in the mind of new characters. So it is not okay to take books out of the library. We should be encouraging children to read, and we should be encouraging parents to go with their children and to look at what they are reading. Do not ban books. Thank you.
Thank you. James Shaw, followed by Lindy House, I believe is virtual. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. James Shaw, I'm a member of the Unitarian Universalist Church of Tampa. School libraries are different than public libraries in that school libraries are accessed by students without their parents accompanying them. Parents do not leave minor children to wander the shelves of the library. So I watch with great alarm the commission's meeting where, under item G1 today, Commissioner Owen asked for a study as to whether or not children are able to pull books off of the quote-unquote "adult" section and read them without checking them out. It sounds to me like we are exploring the possibility of physically removing quote-unquote "adult" books from the shelves, either getting rid of them or putting them behind the counter where you have to ask somebody's permission to access them, and that causes me great alarm because of the inevitability that that would result from the Bible being removed from the shelves. I read to you a passage from chapter 13 of 2 Samuel, starting at verse 9, where Amnon says, "Send everyone out of here, so everyone left him. And then Amnon said to Tamar, his sister, 'Bring the food here into my bedroom so that you can give it to me with your own hands.' So Tamar took the cakes that she had made, and she brought them to Amnon in his bedroom. And when she went in, he told, he took hold of her, and he said, 'Come to bed with me, my sister.' 'Do not do it, my brother,' she said. 'Do not cause me to do a wrong thing like that. We in Israel should not do things like that. It is an evil thing. Think about me. Nobody would honor me. I would be ashamed. I would not be able to hide myself, and nobody would honor you. People would think that you were like the worst men in Israel. Speak to the king. I am sure that he will let you marry me.' But he refused to listen to her, and he was stronger than she, so he took her and he had sex with her." Now, that's in the Bible. If I was reading that passage from The Bluest Eye and asked for all the other pages of the book to be taken off of the shelves because that one page is included, you wouldn't take that seriously. But the inevitability of requesting for a book to be judged by its dirtiest page and removed, all the rest of the pages removed with it from the shelves, is going to cause the removal of the Bible from the shelves. So you're taking us to a place where the Bible is available in the sleaziest hotel rooms, but not in the public libraries. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lindy House, virtual, and then Humira Afzal, I believe is in-person, next. Is Ms. House on the line?
Yes. Good morning. My name is Lindy, and I'm a Hillsborough County resident and a public library card holder, and I'm here to speak in support of our public libraries. It's been suggested by one of the county commissioners that our libraries are feeding our kids garbage. Personally, I'd like to know what they're referring to, because I've never once seen anything in our libraries that ever classified as garbage. When did our libraries become the villains, anyway? Our kids, my kids, who are now adults, they were raised in Hillsborough County, and we were frequent visitors to the library. It was my job as their parent to guide them through their development and make sure that they became well-rounded adults. Books were a great way to do that. It opened their minds to different ideas and helped them become critical thinkers that they are today. If there had been something I didn't want them to read, then I, as their parent, would be the one to have told them that. I didn't- I read to you a passage from chapter 13 of 2 Samuel, starting at verse 9, where Amnon says, "Send everyone out of here." So everyone left him. And then Amnon said to Tamar, his sister, "Bring the food here into my bedroom so that you can give it to me with your own hands." So Tamar took the cakes that she had made, and she brought them to Amnon in his bedroom. And when she went in, he told, he took hold of her. And he said, "Come to bed with me, my sister." "Do not do it, my brother," she said. "Do not cause me to do a wrong thing like that. We in Israel should not do things like that. It is an evil thing. Think about me. Nobody would honor me. I would be ashamed. I would not be able to hide myself, and nobody would honor you. People would think that you were like the worst men in Israel. Speak to the king. I am sure that he will let you marry me." But he refused to listen to her, and he was stronger than she. So he took her, and he had sex with her. Now, that's in the Bible. If I was reading that passage from The Bluest Eye and asked for all the other pages of the book to be taken off of the shelves because that one page is included, you wouldn't take that seriously. But the inevitability of requesting for a book to be judged by its dirtiest page and removed, all the rest of the pages removed with it from the shelves, is going to cause the removal of the Bible from the shelves. So you're taking us to a place where the Bible is available in the sleaziest hotel rooms, but not in the public libraries. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lindy House, virtual, and then Humira Afzal, I believe is in person, is next. Is Ms. House on the line?
Yes. Good morning. My name is Lindy, and I'm a Hillsborough County resident and a public library card holder. And I'm here to speak in support of our public libraries. It's been suggested by one of the county commissioners that our libraries are feeding our kids garbage. Personally, I'd like to know what they're referring to because I've never once seen anything in our libraries that ever classified as garbage. When did our libraries become the villains, anyway? Our kids, my kids, who are now adults, they were raised in Hillsborough County, and we were frequent visitors to the library. It was my job as their parent to guide them through their development and make sure that they became well-rounded adults. Books were a great way to do that. It opened their minds to different ideas and helped them become critical thinkers that they are today. If there had been something I didn't want them to read, then I, as their parent, would be the one to have told them that. I didn't need the county or librarian looking over their shoulder while they were at the library. In this county, for a child to even get a library card, they need permission from a parent or guardian. And kids 11 and under aren't supposed to be left alone at the library, anyway. If a parent is truly concerned about what their child is reading, they need to go to the library with their children. They need to be involved in their lives. Don't put that responsibility on our public library system. As far as the county's membership with the American Library Association, this is the largest and oldest library association in the entire world. So why would we possibly disassociate ourselves from that? They provide programs to the library system for our children and for adults. So why are we distancing ourselves from such a well-known and respected association? This makes no sense to me. I urge the board not to follow the same path that our public schools have gone down, which has led to book bans. Our libraries are not evil, and neither are our books. If parents have an issue with them, then they can either not allow their child a library card, or they can choose to be an active participant in their child's life and go with them to the library. Maybe it'd be good for the parents to read a few books and broaden their minds, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. House. Is there Humira Afzal? Apologize for messing up your name. And the next speaker is Betsy Braden. She's virtual. Good morning.
Hi. I'm going to reiterate a lot of what the speakers before me have said. I'm very concerned that the Board of County Commissioners is considering actions that would make the Bible unavailable to children simply because there are some parts they might be considered pornographic, or excessively violent, or vulgar, or obscene, notwithstanding its historical and moral importance to history. There are, as people before me have already read some of these passages, so I'll skip it, but there are a number of passages and themes in the Bible that would make it impermissible for anyone under the age of 18 to access them under actions being considered. But books are complicated, and there's a lot of other things that are in this particular book that are of a lot of value. For example, Proverbs 31, 8 to 9. Speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves, for the rights of all who are destitute. Speak up and judge fairly. Defend the rights of the poor and the needy. These are in the same book. Books are complicated, just like people. Zechariah. Administer true justice. Show mercy and compassion to one another. Do not oppress the widow, or the fatherless, the foreigner, or the poor. Do not plot evil against each other. All kinds of passages like that. But under policies that are being considered, children would also not have access to these passages because of, they would have, these books would have to be made off limits to minors because of other things that are in the book. So are you going to exempt the Bible from access to children? Are you also, that would also mean you would need to exempt the Quran and the Torah as well. So think very carefully about the path that you would be going down by following some of these procedures. And I'll also give a personal story. I grew up poor in a small town in central Kansas. I had access to virtually nothing. But I had a bicycle, and I had a library card. And the library was my sanctuary. I spent so much time in the library. I had access to things that I would not otherwise have had access to. I went to the library on my own because my mom was working. She didn't have time to take me. But I had free reign of the library. The librarians loved me because I was a teenager who was hanging out in the library. And guess what? Because of that public library, where I had access to things that policies that are being considered here would probably cut off, I was able to escape. I have a PhD from the University of Michigan, thanks to public libraries and me having had access to whatever I wanted to read in that library. And I think it turned out just fine. And I may be underdressed, but it's because my shirt says, "Knowledge is power."
Thank you, ma'am.
Please do not take that power away from our children.
Betsy Braden, virtual. And the next two speakers in person, Austin Zane and Leila Liliquist. Is Ms. Braden virtual?
There is no one left signed up virtually.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, counsel. Give me one second to pull up my notes, please. Okay. And my concerns are with libraries, but it's not the topic that other people have spoken on. This is a little bit different. This is about the proposed library that's going to be replacing the current Brandon Library. I would like to bring to your attention a few concerning issues regarding the proposed library project. Firstly, I want to discuss the current economic climate in our region. We are booming. It's clear to see. Tampa is a growing region. However, the effects of the last Great Recession hit the Tampa Bay area hard with the housing crisis, layoffs, inflation, and financial hardships. And with about 72% of economists polled by the National Association of Business Economics expecting the next U.S. recession to begin by the middle of next year, I think we must be cautious with our spending and ensure that taxpayer dollars are being allocated in the most responsible way possible, prioritizing projects that have more direct and immediate impact on our community and environment. I would like to bring attention to what I may believe be an inconsistency in the budget proposal for the library project. In this current, the agenda for today, in A35, it shows that a proposed budget for the design going to Harvard Jolly would be a total cost of $941,145.50, whereas online for the Brandon Library Replacement Project Phase II Design and Land Budget Breakdown, it shows only $795,603 in the proposal, but the agenda summary indicates a higher cost. I humbly request transparency and consistency in the budgeting process to ensure the taxpayer funds are being allocated correctly. Secondly, after reviewing the selected contractor for their designs, Harvard Jolly, I admit I do like their designs. Their buildings show character and have a new Florida feel. However, as you may be aware, Harvard Jolly, Inc., along with another contractor, have recently settled a lawsuit with Pinellas County over poor construction in their public safety complex. With damage from storms, the county paid an additional $507,000 of taxpayer money on repairs from storm damage alone. However, Harvard Jolly saddled and only paid $150,000. The other contractor paying out $950,000. This raises questions to me, and hopefully to you, about the payoff of investing so much in just a design contract alone for a library replacement building. And I would like to add that there is already a current library right off of Parsons and Lumston.
All right. Thank you, sir. Do you have any questions about this item? There'll be a staff person in the back of the room that can answer your questions.
Questions about what? Sorry?
The item you were just discussing, the library.
Okay. Thank you.
Leila Liliquist, and the next speaker is virtual, Sarah Parker.
I know my plan is too big to pass around, but this is...
You need to speak in the microphone, Ms. Liliquist.
Leila Liliquist, Brandon, Florida. This plan was presented to the Planning Commission in 2010. That's the revised plan that they asked me to come back with, taking out two driveways that were in the original plan. I worked closely with the 301 Memorial Park in Brandon and Mr. Braun. And in 2018, they gave me the award for most patriotism and keeping the American spirit alive because I waited patiently for them to complete the theaters at the memorial park, and Mr. Braun joined me in wanting to do fundraising. I made the mistake of showing my plans to Mr. Stacy White and the library administrator at the Von Denberg Library. Three weeks after I was asked to start fundraising for our park, the library administration swooped in and bought the property at the corner of Lumston and Parsons. Initially, they put this down as phase one. I came down to the county commission, and I told them the signs need to go. They put up signs saying the replacement library was going to be going in where the canopy of oak trees is. That's the last canopy in Brandon, folks. You guys are the new county commissioners. I apologize. I have not met you guys. I have come to these county commission meetings for the last 33 years. I helped get the half-cent sales tax approved for the hospital to recognize antigen care in the community. I served on the children's board for six years and got accommodations. I run Porta Minto of Hope in Brandon, 15 years of feeding the homeless. I presented the Back to Work Initiative for the community of Tampa, for, I still have a Back to Work program for our felons returning. I also did Hillsborough Cares with Catholic charities. I lobbied against Tent City, and of course, Tent City was voted down by our county commission. I did not agree with it. I thought tiny houses would be better. I'm a longstanding citizen. I'm a leader in my community. One of my students just was accepted to MIT, and I am very proud of her. I've graduated 500 Bright Future students. I'm going to pass this around briefly, if I can get them back. And I appreciate you hearing me, but we need green spaces, and that's what's in our community plan, and it's being ignored. We have a beautiful library, and it's really a land grab because Mr. Owens needs to disclose that he was a member of Center Place Board of Directors as a legal advisor for the past three years. He just stepped down. There's a collision going on that you guys don't know about as new members, and I would love to meet with each and every one of you to discuss that, but those did not come out. So therefore, item number A35 should be rescinded and taken out of your agenda items because it's a discredit to our community for us not to have a voice in what's going on in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Liliquist. You and Mr. Zane can speak with staff in the back room.
Would you even like to see this board members?
You can pass it out if you'd like.
I'll pass it around briefly, as the patriotism award has been...
Okay. Thank you. Your time's up. Okay, Sarah Parker, she's virtual, followed by Daniel Powell, also virtual. Is Ms. Parker on the line?
No one else remains on the line for virtual speakers.
Okay. The next speaker is Iliana Centron, followed by Cornelius Constantino.
Good morning. I'm Iliana Centron, Deputy Director of Enterprise in Latinas, a nonprofit organization focused on women's and economic, community economic development based in Waimama. At the last Board of County Commissioners meeting held on April 19th, several public statements were made about our organization's work and funding received from Hillsborough County in the context of the discussion of our application for funding to the CDBG Public Facilities Program to continue Phase II of improvements at our Waimama Opportunity Center. We want to clarify the facts surrounding these statements for your reference and the public record. Enterprise in Latinas has received or been committed $960,815 from Hillsborough County in the last four years through different grants and contracts to provide services to our community and to improve our facilities, and not millions of dollars, as stated during the last meeting. In fact, county funding in this period has represented only between 10% and 17% of our organization's budget, with private grants and donations we have secured making up the rest to fund community programs and services. In addition, Enterprise in Latinas has had two CDBG-funded contracts before, which were completed successfully, one for public facilities and one for public services. During the board's, during the board's discussion of the grant agreement for a public facilities grant, the statements issued about our performance were focused on a public services contract, which is currently underway. So we consider the discussion didn't show the full trajectory and experience our organization has partnering with Hillsborough County for CDBG-funded projects and other county-funded projects. Finally, we heard questions raised regarding our current CDBG Public Services Program, which offers workforce development training to low-income residents of unincorporated Hillsborough County. The three courses that are being offered are on track, and our organization has had consistent and frequent communication about progress with county staff since last October. In closing, Enterprise in Latinas is positioned to contribute significantly to Hillsborough County's plan to address the needs of several neighborhood revitalization strategy areas across the county, and we look forward to continuing to join forces for this purpose into the future. We have submitted an expanded written version of this public comment to the clerk via email for your review and the public record. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you want to make your comment? Okay. Cornelius Constantino, and then Rhonda Durant. Good morning, sir.
Mr. Commissioner, members of the board, and the commission, good morning. My name is Neil Constantino. I live in Tampa, and I'm here as a member of a think tank. And I was, it's a volunteer think tank. It's all volunteers. It's called Kamala, Florida. And I volunteered to work on a program that involves over $400 million in our community because FDOT 7 is proposing or has set aside $35 million to destroy the northbound Howard Franklin Bridge. Now, I ask you, if you and I owned that bridge, would we take $35 million of our money and destroy a perfectly good bridge? I don't think we would do that. And everyone I talk to, I get the same response. So there's something wrong with us spending $35 million to destroy a bridge. So my ask today is that a group be formed here, staff members, and we sit down and talk about how we could repurpose the bridge. And I passed out a flyer that outlines 40 items that would be a win for us as a community if we repurposed the bridge. And I hope there's enough time to go through it, but you can share that with your community, your staff, and I will be back to go into more detail on each one of these items. But basically, it starts with saving $400 million. The bridge is good for 40-ton trucks today, so you can imagine the safety factor goes through the roof if the bridge is then limited to 4-ton trucks in the future. The $35 million could be put in escrow or spent in a better way. We would do solar array on the bridge, 60,000 PV panels in the canopy over the bridge. And so that would generate 20 megawatts of power. And if indeed the county was a partner in a public-private partnership, the county could buy that clean energy. So that's an option that we can look at. There could be bridge art. There'd be charging stations on both ends of the bridge. It's a green project. It's a carbon footprint project. It's a resiliency project. It's a sustainability project. It's a rain-water recovery project. And it's a PV panel covers across Tampa Bay Trail.
Thank you, Mr. Constantino.
And I'll be back to, if there are any questions about this project.
Appreciate your comment, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Durant, and now the last two speakers are Karen Sinresh and Judith Lehman. Is there, is it Ronita Durant, I think?
My name is Ronita Durant, and I'm here to share my bad customer service experience, our experience with Mr. Joe Gross and Mr. Dexter Varge. On March 22nd, I was surprised to receive a letter informing me that a code enforcement lien was placed on my property. I was confused because I had no prior notice or warning. So I called the number on the letter, all to no avail because I had to leave a message for a call back, and I did. So I'm sorry. When I received the call back, the call on my ID said "no caller ID," so I don't answer no caller ID phone calls. So I Googled code enforcement, and I saw the name Joe Gross. So I sent a certified letter to Joe Gross, Mr. Joe Gross, I'm sorry. And I looked for a phone number. It only had an area code. So after I sent the certified letter to him at the Queen Palm address, I followed with the phone call to Commissioner Gwen Myers' office. And shortly after that, I received a phone call from Mr. Gross, saying that he was asked to give me a phone call, and he did. And he said, I told him about the letter I had sent to him, and he said, "Why don't we speak after I receive your letter?" I agreed. So after about eight days had passed, I didn't hear from Mr. Gross at all, no phone call, no, no nothing. So I checked... So I checked my certified letter and learned that it was delivered on March the thirtieth, and signed for by Ms. S. Epps. So I went, since I didn't hear from Mr. Gross, so I came down to this office, and I spoke to someone named Hal Friend, and he told me, he said, you can visit the Palm, the Queen Palm office. I said, I can? He said, yes. So I left here, I went to the Queen Palm office, and I spoke to Mr. Gross. I explained to him who I was, I introduced myself, and I told him I had sent him a certified letter. So he immediately tried to rush me out, rushed me off, and telling me that I had a meeting to go to. So I told him, I said, sir, I said, please, you know, did you receive my letter? He went on to say, no, he didn't receive it. He made a comment about the mail, my letter being snail mail. So I was very offended with that, because I'm, our U.S. Postal Service, for over forty years, I'm retired from the Postal Service, and I was offended by his remarks. So I went on to try to share my complaint with him, he constantly tried to get me out of his office. So after that, I left the office, and I got the name Dexter Barge from Mr. Hal Friend. So I immediately sent an email to Dr. B, Dr. Dexter Barge, I sent him an email, and his response to me, that he will meet with me after April the seventeenth, which would have been another week later, and then I had to go through the chains of command and speak to Mr. John Paul Lavandera and Mr. Tony Converse. And then I noticed that neither one of those gentlemen's names was on the email. So I waited and waited, so on April twenty-fourth, I received a call from Mr. John Paul Lavandera, asking him to meet with me. And I asked him, had Mr. Barge contacted him? He said, no, he had no idea that he was supposed to meet with me on the email. So on the twenty-sixth of April, Mr. John Paul, Mr. John Paul Lavandera and Mr. Tony Converse did come to my home, very nice, very respectful, very concerning, they listened to my complaint, they were just totally awesome.
All right, thank you, Ms. Durant. If you go to the back room, we're going to have appropriate staff person meet with you. Thank you. All right, last two speakers, Karen Sinresh, followed by Judith Lehman. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, I'm Karen, my name is Karen Sinrich, I'm a resident of Hillsborough County. Over many years, I took my children and now my grandchildren to the library to select books. Until they got driver's licenses, none of them were able to go to the public library by themselves. So there's, and I believe that is the case for most people with their children. So they're not unaccompanied children going around the library, somebody brought them there, and somebody is going to use their judgment as a parent or a grandparent with what books they are selecting. When the books are removed from the shelves, people like me, who like to browse through the books with my grandchildren, are missing books, and we don't know that they're missing books. You look at the books and you're saying, oh gee, what were the books that I enjoyed or my kids enjoyed that I can share with them? But if they're not there, you assume the library doesn't have the books. So you're depriving those of us who come afterwards of being able to select the books for our children and our grandchildren, because they're hidden away. We don't know they're hidden away, we're not going into the library and saying, hey, where are the books that are hidden away? We go on the shelves with our library cards to take out our books. And the, you know, there's so many great books, and then there's people who arbitrarily ban books, like Eli Weisell's book, which had a profound influence on my oldest daughter, who read it when she was in elementary school and is now holds the Holocaust chair at the University of Tennessee as a result of reading that book. That book is banned by some of these libraries and some of the schools, because they don't want children to get it. She was in elementary school, she read it, she decided a few years later that she wanted to be a Holocaust historian, and she is. And who knows how many other thousands and millions of children will be deprived of the opportunity to read life-changing books, books that change their lives for the better and give them an identity and a meaning to their lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sinresh. Last speaker this morning, Judith Lehman. Good morning.
Good morning. It's my first time speaking before this group, and I have a simple message, that the people that I've met that want to ban books, they don't want to ban guns.
Thank you, ma'am. That closes the public comment portion of the agenda. Commissioner Kemp, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I just like to, I need to pull A35, that's the Brandon Library. I don't feel comfortable on the consent agenda. I'd like to see if we could defer it, so that, to get a level of comfort, you know, with the kind of very strong objections we heard this morning, and so I'd like to pull that from consent and see if we could defer it and get a better comfort level.
Bonnie, what are your thoughts on that?
So I hadn't heard about the concerns until today, so I think it's okay to defer it, I'm okay pulling it from consent, but I would like staff the opportunity to be able to speak to it just in case there is a timely issue. I just wasn't aware of the issues until today.
So are you wanting to pull it for discussion in the meeting, or are you wanting to defer it, or?
Yes, if we can pull it for discussion later, it may be that deferring it is just okay, I just haven't been able to speak to staff about it.
Okay, so just for right now, we'll do that.
Yes, sir.
Does that require a motion?
Yes, sir, it requires a motion and a simple majority vote.
Okay, so a motion to defer, or to bring it up at the end of the meeting?
Second.
And then we'll play it by ear, I guess. Second by Commissioner Cohen, no other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, can we have a motion on the remainder of the consent?
So moved.
Second, Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Kemp, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, D1.
Good morning, Board. Johanna Lundgren, the Senior Assistant County Attorney. This is the second public hearing to consider the adoption of an ordinance declaring zoning in progress and providing for a temporary moratorium on the establishment of vaping retail shops within five-hundred feet of any public or private elementary, middle, or secondary school for a period of one-hundred-and-eighty days following the effective date of the ordinance. And the first of the two public hearings on this ordinance was held on April nineteenth. As I introduce the ordinance at that time, I'll be brief and ask the board to hold a second public hearing at this time and take a vote to enact the ordinance this morning, and I'm available if there are any questions.
All right, thank you. This is a public comment, public hearing, anyone like to speak to the item? Commissioner Owen?
Yes, and I just again want to thank staff for all their hard work on this, and my fellow county commissioners for backing me this whole time for this, because this is something that's so critical, I think these one-hundred-and-eighty-day moratoriums is very important, too, so there's no mad dash for any type of zoning. So just wanted to thank our county commissioners for supporting this initiative, it's very important, and I'll move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to approve by Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Myers, and just want to thank Commissioner Owen for his leadership on this issue. If you have no other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. The next item is item B1. This is to approve a contract for sale or purchase of real property for approximately four-hundred-and-forty-nine acres in the Baumscrub Preserve by the J. N. K. Platt Environmental Lands Acquisition Program. Forrest Turberville will present this item.
Thank you, Bonnie, and good morning, Commissioners Forrest Turberville, Conservation Environmental Lands Management. At the last regular board meeting on April nineteenth, the board instructed staff to prepare a purchase contract for the four-hundred-and-forty-nine-acre McGrady Road parcel within the Baumscrub ELAP site, and then bring the contract back at a later date for the board's consideration. And I'm happy to report that staff has completed this task, and today we are requesting your approval by supermajority vote of a contract for sale and purchase of the four-hundred-and-forty-nine-acre property at an amount of thirty-two-point-five-million dollars with McGrady Road Investment LLC and its partners. In order to complete the transaction, we also ask that you approve a budget amendment resolution to accommodate short-term interim financing through the county's commercial paper program in an amount up to thirty-two-million-six-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-three-hundred dollars to initially fund the purchase and associated transactional costs, as well as reallocate existing budgeted program funds to the land acquisition budget line. And in this case, the transactional cost consists primarily of a property survey, Phase One ESA, what we call an environmental site assessment, and also title insurance. And then finally, staff recommends approval of a reimbursement resolution that establishes the county's intent to reimburse itself from future bond proceeds for costs incurred with this acquisition, as well as any other ELAP-related capital projects that may incur qualified expenditures prior to the issuance of ELAP general obligation bonds. The ELAP bond issuance is expected to occur later this summer, and the details of such financing will be presented at a future board meeting for your consideration and approval. And of course, the financing of this transaction and its associated costs will be satisfied within the confines of the current ELAP mileage rate. Happy to answer any questions, and we also have real estate staff and management budget here as well.
All right, thank you, Forrest. With the pleasure of the board.
Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion approved, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Cohen. If no comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you, Forrest. Bonnie, next item.
Sorry, thank you. The next item is a staff report. This is item G1. This is to receive a combined staff report regarding the American Library Association membership and the minor access to library collections. Andrew Bradenbaugh will present this item.
Hey, can we put up G1 on my desk? Okay, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Andrew Bradenbaugh, Director of Library Services. Before I start the report, I do want to clarify, because there may be some, there seems to be some misconceptions on the part of the public about the nature of the questions. At no time has there been a request to remove materials from the library or any discussion of removal of library materials. So I wanted to be very clear, the combined report that we'll be presenting is addressing very specific questions in a very narrowly-focused way. So with that, I'll proceed. Next slide. The first question that we're going to be addressing this morning was about the library's membership in the American Library Association, and the specific questions are actually included in the slides, so next slide. Is the county a member of the American Library Association? And the short answer to that is yes. We are currently an active member, we've been a member for fifty-three years, and we are an organizational member of the American Library Association and the division known as the Public Library Association as well. Last year, our membership dues were just over two-thousand dollars. Next slide, please. What are the program benefits that we get from the ALA, and if we get these benefits, can we get them somewhere else, and/or can we accomplish it to a different way? There's a handful of things that we get as an organizational member. These things are listed here, job postings through the ALA Job List, which is a national job board directed specifically at the information profession. We purchase professional materials, books and magazines, for staff development and for public checkout. We participate in professional training and educational programs, but all of these things that we participate in do not require membership in the organization, and specifically, the training efforts that we participate in, our membership does not alleviate any additional costs, those are only alleviated by individual memberships that staff may or may not have. Next slide, please. What's required to disassociate with the ALA? Membership can be canceled at any time, it's a membership organization. Discontinuation would also occur if we don't pay our bill at the end of the year. So, and our membership, current membership expires June thirtieth. You know, as a result of this question, we have been reviewing all of the benefits and the expenditures that we receive, and we have determined that there is no savings by being a member of the American Library Association at an organizational level, and are planning on not renewing at the end of the current term. Next slide. The next questions, that set of questions that we'll be addressing this morning have to do with minors' access to library materials. And again, I'm going to go through the questions each individually, because they're in the slides. So next slide, please. Thank you. If minors have a library card, can they check out books in the adult section of the library or access virtual or audible books designated adult content? And the short answer to that question is yes. If there isn't supervision going on, they can access materials throughout the library. The next question, if minors have a library card, can they remove books off the shelf or access audio from the adult section, read them in a designated area of the library? And again, yes, with the same parameters. Do parents have an opt-out or opt-in option for their minor children's library card that would prevent their kids from checking out books in the adult section of the library or checking out controversial books dealing with sexuality? The short answer to that is no, there is no opt-out currently for that type of material, with the exception of just not getting a child a library card. Next slide. Thank you. If, and the question sort of refers to the previous one, if none of these exist, if not, what would be required to create a policy where parents have the opportunity to opt-in or opt-out? That would, the steps would be discussion with the Public Library Board about policy changes guiding the library, some discussions about custom programming of our library system, which commonly referred to as library catalog, our integrated library system, and potentially re-registering all minor borrowers with new parental guidelines in place. Next slide. And so with that, with the answers in mind for your discussion, we've included some options here at the end of this. One is to continue with our existing parental controls, and there are some existing parental controls in place about age-related access to libraries and access to DVD content that may be R or not rated, or to refer this to the Public Library Board and let our Public Library Board and our tech specialists chew on this for a while and come up with some great suggestions about how to move forward with some additional, potentially optional, parental support options. So with that, I will make myself available for questions.
All right, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Commissioner Owen?
Great, and thank you, Andrew, for all your work on this. You know, it's a bit eye-opening, just listening to some of the speakers and in the public, how uninformed they were about what I was asking for. I agree with so much of what they said. We want to empower parents. We do not, we're not seeking here to ban any books. What we're wanting to do is to do basically the same thing that woke organizations like Disney and Netflix do. It's very simple. And, and so I guess as to the ALA, it seems like it's a moot issue then, I think, here today. The position of the, some people were wanting evidence on why we should disassociate with the ALA. Well, we're wasting taxpayer dollars. We get no benefit. This is from Library Services. We get zero benefit from it. So I started thinking about that, and I was like, I wonder how many, many memberships we have. It's kind of like when I moved from my house, I was, I found out I was a member of so many things, and I started canceling all these memberships, and it saved me like a thousand dollars a month. I know that's not a lot in the scheme of things for our purposes, but really makes me want to take a look at some of these memberships that we have that may not give any value, like the ALA. My issue with the ALA, again, was just that, obviously, the organization, to me, it has nothing to do with politics. When you start bringing Marxism into the fold, and I know some people had some concerns about, how is that bad? I saw, heard some public comments, well, take a look at world history, take a look at world history. So since it's a moot point, I'm going to move on from the ALA, and Andrew, let's move on to the minor access to library collections. Now, again, I want to reiterate that I agree with so much of what everybody said today, words like empowering parents to make decisions, not pulling books off shelves. I have taken a deep dive into this and have worked closely with Library Services. First, Andrew, I want to say you guys are excellent. Our Library Services in Hillsborough County go unmatched. We have wonderful employees and people at our Library Services, but this is one that I just, this is an issue that I just feel has completely fallen through the cracks. I heard some of the I heard some of the comments too, especially bringing the Bible in, and I, you know, I'm not going to bite on that, but what I will tell you, the books that I'm about to go over are very far from the Bible. These books, I had an eight-year-old pull, okay, and access online, and these books are available in the library system. I do not think any commissioner here, even the parents that spoke, will say that there is any value in any of that literature that is readily available to young people. And when I say young people, from, as young as you can have a library card. And also, Andrew, I want to also reiterate, and I'd like you to clarify, because some people said that you're always accompanied with a parent as a minor. That's not true, from what I heard from you. Could you please explain that real quick?
Yeah. We do have policies in place that prohibit someone under the age of 12 from being in the library without a parent or guardian, and we work very diligently to enforce that. However, that, you know, kids can't in the library. After that, though, at that age, it's a behavior-related response to children in the library. So, over the age of 12, a minor could in fact be in the library on their own recognizance. We do have some teen programs in the afternoon after school to direct the behavior, but after the age of 12, 13 and older kids can be in the library unattended.
Well, and let's talk about that, too. So, a 13-year-old could come in and be unattended. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay. And as far as, as the books, these authors provide age ranges, right, on what's appropriate for a child? Could you talk about that real quick?
Sure. When a book is published, there's usually some kind of age designation, and I'll be clear also, we're primarily talking about fiction content. We're not talking about the general nonfiction, which is where religious texts would be found in the, in our libraries anyway.
Exactly.
So, the, we're talking about fiction content. So, books that come into the library are, have recommended ages by publishers, usually in broad categories by, for juvenile readers, teen readers, adult readers, and we generally use those when we, when we add those to how we divide the library up with classification.
I think the word is age-appropriate content.
Age-appropriate content.
Is that fair to say?
Absolutely.
And I've gone over some of these books that, again, I had an eight-year-old pull these books, okay? And I was, I was mortified, and you know how I feel about that. The book Guilty Pleasures by Deborah Mello, is that available to, let's say, an eight-year-old online or, or in the library?
Yeah, I believe that's only available as a digital book, and it is available to anyone with a library card.
Okay. Commissioners, I've provided this information to you. I have been advised not to read this. I can assure you, it, to me, it is pornography in a book. That's the only way that I know how to say it, and I know it's one of those, those things where I know it when I see it, to use an old legal term. But, but it was mind-boggling to me to see that there's nothing in place for a parent, and this is simply all I want to do, and to go along with what the, the prior, the prior speaker said, empower parents. That's exactly what we need to do. And the whole concept of, hey, you're on your own, parents. You should be watching your kid 24 hours a day. The person who sent me this, she works her tail off at two jobs. She likes to think that our kids are, that we are in a line of protection too for our youth. These books, the authors will tell you, are not designed for youth. They're not. So, so we're not doing anything other than what the, what the author of the book is basically telling us. The book Invitation to Scandal, which I provided the commissioners, is that available to our youth?
Same conditions, online only and as a digital copy and to anyone with a full library card.
What about Desire's Edge by Eden Bradley?
I think they're all the same.
Slippery when wet.
Oh, that one, obviously, you have the book, so.
Commissioners, this isn't about banning books. This is about protecting our youth and working with parents, because there is nothing that I have seen that provides that safeguard that, that would prevent, there's no value in this, okay? I know a lot of the, the speakers here, we're talking about the value they had in certain books. Is there value in the Iliad? Is there value in certain adult books? Absolutely. And that is why age-appropriate content is, I think, the way to tackle this. So, I want to thank you for being here today. This is, this is not by any means, any means a slippery slope. This is something that, like I told you, Netflix and Disney, they put in place as well. So, so I'm going to move to, well, and before I say this, before I give my motion, what I want to do is I want to give the professionals an opportunity to help us. We have a library board. Let's use them. Let's see what they can put in place here to put these safeguards in to protect the innocent of our youth. So, that's, I'm not moving to, to, to make a, a clear policy, because I think, we, I agree with a lot of the speakers, we're not the experts on libraries, and we need to let our, our, our library board, give them an opportunity to advise us. So, I move to direct staff to work with the Public Library Board and Integrated Library Systems Administrators to create a policy for additional parental support tools, which will allow parents to opt-out of sexually explicit adult material for a minor with access via a library card. This includes paperback books and eBooks. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Wollstall. Commissioner Wollstall, you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually missed your name, because I lost myself starting to read this. What was your name? I'm sorry.
Andrew Bradenbaugh.
Okay. Thank you for clearing up the misconceptions about what this report was, because if you didn't do it, I was going to, because I watched my colleague, who, because of Weird Sunshine, I can't talk to, get his name run through the mud for a long time. I would tell you, Mr. Chair, many of you know how hardened of a person I am and how I actually went to war. I won't opine to the speakers about the people in World War II, but I will tell you that I read this, and this was enough to make an old sailor blush, and that when I was deployed to the Middle East, I would have certainly hoped that my child wasn't able to go to a public library that I do believe in and support and, and read anything about this. So, thank you very much. I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp.
Thanks. I have a few just technical questions first. So, this, and the only thing that's been brought up now is online. We're not apparently talking about physically in the libraries, but as I, one thing to make, to ask about is, it's expected within the libraries that anyone that visits a library that's, that 12 or under has a parent accompanying them.
There is expectation of guardianship, correct?
Right. So, we're talking about 13 to 17-year-olds in the library.
Correct.
And in terms of online, so if a, if a parent, a child has a card, any, anyone can go online and get a book online, is, because that's what we're talking about here, apparently?
Yes.
Okay. So, but the parent could have the card, and, and only the parent, so that they could monitor the child's account. We heard somebody say that today. They could see everything that their child was looking online. They could monitor their online access.
They can monitor what their child has checked out on the, the library's automated system, correct?
They also could just have their card to be used, and they're, they could take away their own child's card if this was a concern to them.
Yeah, yes, that's, that's a parental response, a right as well, not to have a library card for any member of their family.
Okay. So, I think we already have the guards in place, the guardrails in place, and I think it's one of parental responsibility. And I'll just say, we had not one parent in here today saying anything about supporting this idea that, that we needed these more controls somehow. We had the opposite, in fact. We had powerful tributes to our libraries this morning. Libraries are deeply loved in Hillsborough County. I personally am so proud of our libraries, and my biggest issue, and I've talked to you before about this, is I see, we have too few hours, and I guess it's a problem of staffing, and I see the kids sitting on the steps at the libraries in Seminole Heights, and I feel bad about that, that we don't have longer hours and more access. Our libraries are deeply loved, and for me, like the speakers that spoke, for me, the library as a child was truly my refuge, and books were my refuge. And I can't imagine having raised two kids. I know, Mr. Owen, or Commissioner Owen, sorry, you don't have children, right? So, you haven't been through this, but I'll tell you, I don't know, any parent would love to have their kids at the library. I can't even imagine a better place. I, I just can't even imagine it. And every, every kid nowadays, I mean, all they have to do is have access to their phone, and even if you control their phone, their kid's phone, or like you're saying, online. It's a matter of parents having to take responsibility for this, not us, not our system. And I have to say, parents want their children at the libraries, and I, and I really don't want to start a thing where we start having, you know, making it seem as though somehow our libraries aren't a wonderful place. We don't want to be in the middle of this. I don't think Hillsborough County should be a nanny state for our libraries, and we don't want an unwanted culture war here with our loved libraries as collateral. I just think this is all unnecessary. We already have guards in place. Parents who are concerned need to take responsibility for their own children, and particularly if it's an online access to this, they can totally control that online access. If it's an in-house access at the libraries, they control, control that too. So, I think it's really a matter of parents taking responsibility for the choices that they make for their children, and we already have the opportunities for them to do that in the way that we already have in place. So, I would, won't be supporting this.
Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you very much. I have been an elected official for over 10 years, and I am not aware of any time that anyone has called my office to complain about anything related to content in the public libraries. I have, I have, do not deny, after reading what Commissioner Owen provided, that it's, at least to me, somewhat offensive, but I'm sure there's all sorts of other topics in books in the library that might not be to my liking. I'm sure that there are probably explicit war photos and, and, you know, I don't, I, you can only imagine, if you're exploring through the stacks of books, what you may find in terms of photographs that someone might find objectionable, topics that someone might find objectionable. And I think that, that where I disagree with Commissioner Owen is that this isn't a slippery slope, because I can't imagine, when you go down the road of, of starting to figure out how to classify and restrict certain content, how it doesn't just start snowballing into something else, and we only need to look at the conversation going on in our own state to know that that can very well be the case across other jurisdictions and other areas. The fact that this is all accessible, not actually in books but online, is another interesting thing, because it means that in order to get to it, someone already has to be, have a device or, or be on a computer, and I dare say that if they're searching the internet, they're going to find a lot more objectionable content than what you might find here at the library. You know, I don't, I, I guess that where I come out on this is where Commissioner Kemp is, and that is that I don't think that this discussion belongs here. It sounds to me as though our library board is already capable of making the decisions about these types of things, and is already thinking about policies and, and procedures. And, you know, whether there's a motion or not, I don't, I don't see it as being something that you can't take up as part of the, the, the normal, the normal course of business. So, I, I don't want to, I, I don't want to do this. I don't want this conversation to continue. I don't think it belongs here, and for that reason, I, I'm not going to support the motion either.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. And thank you, Andrew. As I shared with you on yesterday, I received about eight to 10 calls regarding this issue, and it's only because we, as a board, have made this an issue, and during my tenure, no one has contacted me about the library services at all. We know we see people at the library at all times, and so, we have just recently appointed a couple of people to the library board, and if there are issues, and I'd like to make a substitute motion, that we allow the library board to come back if there are some concerns or issue, that they make recommendation to this board, and we do not do the reverse, give them a charge from this board. That's what is not acceptable right now. That is my substitute motion.
Point of order, that is in my original, that's in my.
Hold on, Commissioner, hold on. Can you better explain or define your motion?
Sure. The substitute, that we go directly to the library board, and they bring, present recommendations to us as relate to this item.
Well, to me, that, that seems like it's essentially the same thing. I mean, Andrew, what are your thoughts on that?
They sound very compatible to me. Letting the, it's kind of option B, letting the library board and the IT people look at it and, and come, and make recommendation and inform the board of, of that policy decision. So, yeah, that's, that's, sounds to me like the same general direction.
You okay with that, Commissioner Myers?
I'm okay.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Owen.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm mind-boggled that this wouldn't be a seven to zero vote. Commissioner Kemp, I don't have kids, but I sure will fight for them in Hillsborough County. Let's keep in mind, this is not just the general internet. This is our public library system, that this is available to, to an eight-year-old. I don't understand why this would be political. I don't even understand why this is, this is being tough on library services. As a matter of fact, I think we're doing a favor to our library services, creating a real future problem that we could have if kids continue to access this material. All it takes is one kid, and you can find yourself in court.
Ma'am, be quiet. Ma'am, I don't want to hear that. Go ahead, Commissioner.
So, so, I, I guess my other issue, just listening to some of the commissioners' comments, that, you know, and libraries are a refuge, a refuge from who? Who? I mean, we want to put, all we want to do, or all I'm seeking to do, is put parents in control. That's it. And I know, I believe in the library services, that they can come back to us with these recommendations, that are basically probably based off the author, what the author says our audience should be. What we are doing, as Hillsborough County right now, is we are allowing for a different audience than what the author states as far as age appropriateness to access this material. This is just simple logic. This is not Republican, Democrat. This is just, this is just right and wrong, good and evil. So, let's protect the innocence of our kids, and I just ask that we, Commissioner Myers, my, my motion does that. It's going to allow library services to come back to us and give us a recommendation, but all I'm really looking for is, again, an opt-in or opt-out. If you want your, if you want your kids to read Slippery When Wet, you'll have the ability to let them read this stuff, okay? So, all I'm asking is for some type of parental controls similar to what Netflix, Disney, and everybody else has. So, thank you.
Commissioner Wollstall, and then I'm going to make a couple of comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a kid, a seven-year-old, and a parent did show up to speak in favor of this. This parent showed up to speak in favor of this motion, so I fully support it, and thank you for trying to protect my child, whom I know my wife would be very upset if he was able to check out one of these books next year at eight years old. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wollstall, and I'm just going to make a couple of comments. First of all, Andrew, thank you for being here, your presentation. I think as many of the board members said, you know, we have what I believe is probably the very, very finest library system, and I appreciate your leadership and everything you do. Something that I'm very passionate about, and I grew up, the North Tampa Library, across from Chamberlain High School, and I've often said, some of my fondest memories as a child took place there. I do share some of Commissioner Kemp's comments as far as desire for more access and expanded hours, and so I would definitely support that. And that's why, I mean, since being on this board, I've championed so many libraries and library improvements, including implementing an online tutorial to educate our youth on, on the dangers, what to look for as far as sexual predators, and making them go through this tutorial before they access our computers. So, that's what I liked in the recommendation, is not only are you asking for, you know, library, library board and support, but also IT, because I think so much of this stuff is, is, you know, internet-based, that perhaps we can hopefully strengthen some stuff there. But, again, I go back to what Commissioner Owen said. We're not talking about banning, banning books here. So, I'm struggling to understand that the fear that some folks seem to have when we're just talking about strengthening parental options and support. I like, I mean, Commissioner Owen didn't come in here, you know, guns a-blazing, wanting to make all these changes. He's, he's following really is the appropriate approach, and it's not necessarily a policy, but typically when we have. we have advisory boards, whether it's parks, animal services, library board, before implementing policy changes, we involve the particular board, usually they are the experts, they're the ones that we rely on to get their input, get their recommendations, knowing at the end of the day, we're the final arbiter. We're the ones that vote one way or the other. But I don't see any harm in getting, getting their input. I mean, the reality is, I guess they could come back with no recommendations. I mean, they could, without forcing them to make anything. But I look forward to what they, what they have to say, and I think, again, that we should get their input before considering any, any, any policy decision. But I do like the approach, and it's consistent with how we've handled other, whenever we want to make other changes and other policy changes in other departments. So I'm going to support the motion. Commissioner Kemp, then Cameron Cepeda, and then we're going to vote. Commissioner Kemp?
Yes. I just want to make sure I understand again. Right now, any parent can have a library card in just their name, and they totally control any online access as well. They control any online access for their child.
There is, there is no requirement for a parent to get a child a library card in any require, any stretch of the imagination.
So this is already, I don't know, to me, I don't understand why we're even looking at this, because this is already available to any parent who wants this. I'll just, I'll just say that.
All right, Commissioner Cameron Cepeda?
Just like to say I fully support what Commissioner Owens is bringing here, and that's what I'd like to say, I support that. Thank you for bringing it.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Winstall. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried. Five to two. Commissioners Cohen and Kemp voted no.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Next item.
Thank you. The next item is item G2. This is to receive a report regarding positions vacant more than 12 months. Tom Fessler, Assistant County Administrator, will present this item. I'm sorry, Chief Financial Administrator.
Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Fessler, Chief Financial Administrator. I did have a slide that needed to go up. Yep, okay. Yes, Commissioners, on February 1st, Commissioner Winstall requested a report that is addressing the budgeted amount of any positions that have been vacant greater than one year. We're bringing a staff report back to you today that includes a board policy related to position control. That, that policy does address long-term vacant positions. The report also includes a summary that you see on the screen here of the number of positions that have been vacant greater than one year, by funding source, with recommendations, with, not recommendations, but with, with positions that have been, are being eliminated, and with other positions that have been identified as positions that we would like to retain. The report also includes a detail of each of the individual positions, along with their funding source, and finally, a narrative at the end that does provide some justifications for wanting to retain certain of these positions. First of all, in the, in the staff report, we've got the board policy. The board policy does state that positions greater than 12 months old shall be eliminated. The way that we have been addressing compliance with the policy, county administration has been addressing compliance with the policy, is through the annual budget process. So once a year, what we're doing is, we're looking at this list of positions vacant greater than one year. We're going back to our departments, we're asking them to evaluate those positions and provide us with justifications why they would, might like to retain positions, or identifying that they could let the positions go. So, in other words, Commissioner Winstall's request is very timely. It allowed us to be able to complete this process for this year as part of the fiscal year '24 budget process. That's why it's taken a little bit of time to get back to you. We apologize for the, for the timing. As of March 27th, 2023, we have 115 positions that have been vacant greater than one year. The total value of those positions was $6.5 million. Just to provide a little bit of perspective, the county administrator's organization has 6,088 budgeted positions, so 115 positions represents just under 2% of those positions. Each of the positions that is included in the report today has been evaluated by each of our departments. They've, they've provided back justifications to the budget office on why they would like to retain certain positions, and we've provided, again, a narrative in the report that kind of identifies the justifications for those retentions. Primarily, those, there are, I guess, 46 positions, as you can see, that are, that are identified as being eliminated. That creates a value or a savings of $1.2 million for our general funds. Of the 69 positions that are identified as positions that we would like to retain, most of those positions are in restricted funding sources, such as the grants funds, the library fund, enterprise funds, building funds, et cetera. The number of long-term vacant positions is a little bit higher than it would normally be, just for what we've been experiencing over the last several years. So as we went into the pandemic, we kind of slowed recruiting efforts with, along with the, the uncertainty that came along with the pandemic, being out of the office and shutting down certain services, like parks, in other words, for a little bit of period of time. There have been some areas where we have definitely slowed recruiting, because what we didn't want to do is, with that uncertainty in the economy, hire positions and then find out that there was going to be some significant economic impacts, and then have to let people go. So that was one of the issues. And then as we've gone along, there has been a stronger recovery than we had anticipated originally. So that has created a very tight labor market. We are having a lot of difficulty recruiting and retaining positions. Right now, we have a current vacancy rate on an overall basis of about 15%. Typically, that vacancy rate is more in the 8% to 10% range. So we are having some difficulties there, and some of that does relate to what inflationary pressures that we're seeing in the market. Positions, we're having to become more competitive in the market to be able to, to hire positions. And with, with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Tom. What's the pleasure of the board? Commissioner Winstall?
I already discussed, we don't really need to take an action. They have the information, and they have the ability to do what they need to do with the elimination of those positions. So I'll motion to receive the report, and good job to you and Mr. Bricky. Thank you very much.
Second. Motion to receive the report, Commissioner Winstall, second Commissioner Myers. No other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thanks, Tom. Next item.
Thank you. The next staff report is item G3. This is to receive a report on water consumption and the communications plan, and Lisa Ray is here to present this item. We also have other staff here, too. Kevin Moran is going to speak as well.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the board. I am here to talk about the South County water demand and water conservation communication that we have been doing. This was requested at the April 19th board meeting, so we're happy to share this with you. My name is Lisa Ray. I am the Director of Water Resources. So to start, I want to give you kind of a background on where we're at with our current conditions. We are about seven inches behind on our annual average rainfall, which means we have very dry, hot conditions, as most of you know, when you look around. We are actually teetering on a drought condition, as noted by NOAA and other professional organizations. We did recently have some rain, which was very helpful, but it did not make up that deficit that we have experienced. So how has this impacted us? Well, in the South County area, we have seen tremendous growth, and our demand for water has increased substantially. The red bars represent Sundays, which are supposed to be non-watering days. The blue bars are the rest of the days of the week. And in February, February 5th, to be exact, the Sunday usage was 48 million gallons per day. However, when we look at the Sundays in April, they're ranging from 61 to 66 million gallons per day. So almost a 20 million gallon per day increase. That difference is due to irrigation. People are allowed to water on Sundays if they do have new landscape or are trying to establish sod. So that's why you also do some, see some increases on Sundays. Now, I do want to point out that when we have a rain event, you see the demand drop off. So that is the green circle that is on the graph. That happened on April 16th and 17th. Most recently, we saw similar events happen at the end of April. April 26, 27, we received almost half an inch of rain in the South County area, and our demand dropped from 67 and a half million gallons the day before to 50.4 million gallons. So a significant impact when we start getting rain. So the rainy season is going to see a huge turnaround in this, but at the moment, we are in some very hot, dry conditions. So how are we reaching out to our residents, and what is the education message? Well, as you remember, back in January, we rescinded the one day per week watering restriction in South County. So countywide, we now have two days a week of watering available. It is categorized by your home address, with certain days being allocated for different numbers. That allows us to make sure that the distribution of water is more consistent across the board, so that we're able to provide the supply that's necessary and maintain the pressures in our system. There's no watering allowed on Sundays, as I mentioned before, and we do have limited watering hours, because if people are watering at 1:00 in the afternoon, you're losing a lot of water to evaporation. So that is why we do also limit the hours. And we have been going out of our way to reach out to the community, to reach out to the public and news organizations to help share this message with our residents. And that being said, I'm going to ask Kevin to come up and talk about the outreach programs.
Good morning. Kevin Brand, Environmental Management Division. The irony of an engineer talking about communications not lost on me here today. We're not the best at it, but I think we're getting better. The first bullet actually proves my point. For many years, the Water Department thought that we communicate with our customers through just putting something in the bill. And I was in a meeting a few years ago, and we said, put it in the bill, and then somebody pointed out, a lot of people don't even get a bill anymore. And we, that was a surprise to a lot of us, engineers in the room. So a lot, we've done a lot of things. We're getting much better. That's what the messages we'll get to today. First of all, through the new billing system, we've gotten emails from most of our customers. So we've been able to use the email system, and we've, we have 200,000 emails to reach our customers. We also have a staff of two people who, one is part-time, and another is a full-time water conservation person. They do public outreach, and they help with messaging, develop a lot of materials, the thing you see on the slide today. So we're excited about that. We also have a great communications department that's helped us move into the 21st century. We're using social media effectively, I believe. We, apparently, the county has 166,000 followers on multiple platforms, and we're using that regularly to get the message out. We're also using text messages, and this, we heard back that this was a very effective set of messaging, that the click rate was very high. These, we can talk about water all day long, click rates lost on me, but I've been told this was really effective. So the point is, the, as we get more support from communications and better communication with the new methods, social media, text messages, emails, we're messaging much better. And another effective outreach has been through neighborhood associations, and those, you know, those are also the people requiring the watering. So it's kind of ironic that they're going to get the message about irrigation from a lot of the groups that push the watering through the requirement to have green grass. We also are working to, through newsletters of other departments. A lot of these groups have newsletters go out to citizens, and we put our messaging in there. We're going to use radio ads. And one thing we've done is we've found, we've, through our billing system, we've found high water use neighborhoods, and we're putting these signs up that you can see on the slide here. And those are at the entranceways, in the neighborhoods, and just kind of like a in-your-face reminder to certain people that, hey, water's important, please save it. We also partner with a number of groups, and the only one I'll point out on the slide is the Hillsborough County Extension Office, and they do a great job working with us. They have irrigation specialists that will go to people's houses and help them with the irrigation. They will do an analysis of their entire irrigation system. A lot of people have trouble with their timers, and that's been a really successful program. A lot of those other programs, we do rebates on products that help toilets and irrigation systems, smart controllers. One thing that we're going to be looking at in the future is soil moisture sensors, instead of the rain gauges on the timers for irrigation systems. We think that could be a great technology to help us in the future. And these partners are not only local, but Tampa Bay Water and all of Swiftbun. That's all I have about communications.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you all so much for the report. I think the most important thing was just to get this information out there again, so that people understand the situation that we're in during the dry part of the year. My understanding from Tampa Bay Water is that we expect, once the rains start, for all of this to right itself. I think the danger is, if we see the unseasonably dry conditions continue into the rainy season, it's going to have to come back here again to then start to talk about actions to take. But my understanding is that at this point, the reservoir is still almost completely full, and we are, we are, as long as we have a good rainy season, not in danger of recouping what we need to stay under our, our permit limits. So I didn't bring this up with the idea of asking the board to necessarily do anything at this time. You pointed out earlier that our South County residents, up until January 1st, were subjected to one day a week watering restrictions. Now everybody in the county is doing it two days a week. I think that the prudent thing is just to ask everybody to be conservative and follow the rules and to help us get through- Excuse me. You know, to help us get through this next couple of weeks of unseasonably dry weather. So thank you very much for that report.
All right. No other comments? Can we just have a motion to receive the report?
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Kemp. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Finally, we got that consent item.
Thank you. Regarding item A35, that's our next item, I did have the opportunity to speak to staff. We are prepared to move forward. However, we are also okay to defer it. So if the board would like to make a motion to defer to the next meeting, we'll bring it back then.
I'll make a motion to defer.
Okay, we got a motion to defer A35 to our next meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Winstall. If no other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Future issues?
Yes, sir.
Anyone have any future issues? Commissioner Kemp?
Oops. Thank you. I just, I received, actually, a couple of weeks ago, this. I don't know if any of you have received it at your homes. It says, "Community Alert, Hillsborough County." And I thought, wow, what's this? And inside, it says, "Community Alert, a $500 million program, or funding program has been implemented in Hillsborough County. This program protects your home from hurricanes and hail and tornadoes, and you can get up to $75,000 in financing by calling this number." And the average homeowner gets $37,500. And how do you participate in this program? And I was very alarmed, since I know that this does not exist. I did call the number, which I don't usually do, just to find out what they would say, and got put on hold for a few minutes, got someone who answered it, and they, I said, what is, what is this? And can you tell me who's, who's this, who this is from, which is on here, a group called Community Care. And they said, this is Community Care. And I said, well, yeah, can you tell me about your program? And they, and I said, is this Hillsborough County's program? And they said, well, I know people have been asking that. And we sent it out, saying it was Hillsborough County program. It's not exactly a Hillsborough County program, but the Hillsborough County is very much behind us and working with us on this as well as the state of Florida and everyone else. And they started putting it out to me, and, and told me that actually we could put this on our, our tax liens for purchasing any of this. And so, at any rate, at this point, I'm very concerned about this. I'm very concerned about the fraudulent nature. I'll tell you, I spoke to someone, I live in the city of Tampa, someone from unincorporated county just received their second one of this exact same thing just two days ago. So I'd like to ask our legal department to please investigate this and do whatever we can in terms of this, because I just want these kinds of things to stop and, you know, taking advantage of people. And I'd also like the public to know, whoever has received this, that this is not from Hillsborough County, has nothing to do with Hillsborough County.
All right, thank you. Christina, you good with that?
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. Mine is regarding boards and council. Going to ask the county administration and the county attorney's office to bring back recommendations for term limits, and to create opportunities for more people to serve on boards and councils.
Bonnie, do you have that? Okay. No other items? We're adjourned. We're adjourned.